Good morning and welcome to our March 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And it's my pleasure this morning, my honor to invite Pastor Stanley Kelly of Fellowship Baptist Church up for our invocation. Pastor Kelly?
All right, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you this morning and we thank you for your grace and mercy in providing for us a new day. We find the Scriptures validated every morning when we wake up that your mercies are new to us. And so, Lord, we thank you for that. We thank you for this occasion that brings these folks together today to make decisions and to work through and to make this county that we live in a better place. I pray for wisdom and guidance as they seek to be good stewards of the grace that you've provided, the responsibilities in each of their lives and each of their spheres of authority. And God, I pray that you would give them a direction as they seek to be good stewards of that. I pray that you would help decisions to be made that would be good for the citizens of this place and also most beneficial for your glory. God, help us to keep our minds fixated on you so that we would have the peace of God reigning in our hearts and lives. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I trust everybody's read and looked at their minutes. I have approval of the minutes of our March 10th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Any discussion? All signify, raise your right hand. And discuss the justice of agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
Ah, no adjustments.
No adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Any board member have adjustment or any discussion before we get started? Okay, motion approved the March 19th agenda.
Motion.
So, move. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Special presentation to Mr. Honeycutt.
First on, our agenda is a motion to approve the Donate Life Month proclamation. And Dr. Coley is here. So, if you would like to come up and make some statements.
So, we're waiting for you and you're in your bag. That's because Dr. Cole will be reading this morning from her cellphone. Is that okay?
We have a...
You have a?
We...
Okay. The one is fine. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to present before you this morning. Before I present, I would like to introduce two special guests who are here with me on this morning. One is Chuck Heald. Chuck, if you were standing. He's the Director of Marketing and Communications for Carolina Donor Services. And Latoya Joyner. Latoya is the Community Relations Coordinator with Carolina Donor Services as well. And Latoya brought your gifts on this morning. Wayne County, North Carolina, 2019 Donate Life Month proclamation. Whereas according to the United Network of Organ Sharing, more than 113, 688,000 people are waiting for organ transplants nationally. And 3,189 of those people are in North Carolina. And whereas, an average of 20 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of organ donors. And whereas, every 10 minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list. And the list is growing faster than the rate of organ donation. And whereas, providing facts and dispelling myths are key to making an informed decision about becoming a donor and increasing the number of people who sign up as donors. And whereas, the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles plays a critical role with 4.8 million North Carolinians in the state's donor registry, having registered when they received their North Carolina's driver's license, making it the sixth-largest registry in the country. And whereas, one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve more than 50 lives, tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, and cornea donation. And whereas, North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation and discuss their wishes with their families and physicians. Sign up as donors via North Carolina DMV by putting a heart on their license or enrolling online at donatelife.org. And whereas, Biden Medical Center's Transplant Center is a leader in providing life-saving transplants with patients cared for by a team of experts, including surgeons, nurse, coordinators, social workers, infectious disease specialists, nutritionists, immunologists, and pathologists. And whereas, Carolina Donor Services is federally designed organ procurement organization, serving 7.2 million people in 77 counties of North Carolina and Danville, Virginia, and serving over 100 hospitals and four transplant centers that perform heart, lung, liver, kidney, pancreas, and intestine transplants to maximize the passing of the heroic gift of life from one human being to another through organ and tissue donation. And whereas, the county of Wayne joins healthcare professionals, volunteers, educators, government agencies, faith-based, and community groups, and private organizations in an effort to boost the number of organ, tissue, blood, bone, bone marrow, cornea, and stem cell donors throughout North Carolina. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2019 as Donate Life Month. And Wayne County, and commend this observance to our citizens, adopted this, the 19th day of March 2019, A. Joe Gurley III, Chairman, and it will be attested by Secretary Carol Bowden.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this 2019 Donate Life Month proclamation. And I'd also like to make a couple of comments if it's all right with you. Go ahead. This is dear to me. As many of y'all know, I had a granddaughter that's in heaven now that was on the transplant list. Unfortunately, she didn't live long enough. But there's always a bright side to every story. With the disease that she had, she could not be an organ donor, except for one thing, her coronary. There's two people somewhere today that can see because of my Emily. And if you're not an organ donor, please get on the list. Because, you know, I had never thought much about it until Emily was put on the list. And it's just, it's remarkable what the doctors and the hospitals can do today. I have a sister-in-law that just got a heart transplant that's doing remarkably well. So, it's personal to my family. So, I encourage everyone to please be an organ donor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Any other discussion or comments from any board member?
I'd like to ask a question. I'm just curious, what is the relationship between the percent of organ donors and the percent of recipients from a gender and racial standpoint?
I can tell you, and it's been a while since I did my research, but it varies. I think one of the things is, I think there's a misconception that you have to be of the same race, for example, to donate, but you don't. So, the numbers can be varied all over. So, are you... So, give me a direct question such as, what percentage of...
If black folk make up 12% of the population, do they donate 12% of the organs?
Yes. Yes. In my research, 2013, African-Americans comprised 12% of the total population.
Correct.
And they made up 12% of the total organ donations.
And the reception of, and receiving those organs, what percent is that?
I don't have the number of how many received, but I can tell you...
Would you guess that it was more or less? I mean, if you just had to take a ballpark?
It would be hard for me to tell you because I would have to personally break down of who received by race and...
One final question. What is the procedure or is there protocol for harvesting organs for accidents, gunshots, and so forth and so on? Does anybody keep that number?
There are numbers, but there are also circumstances. So, I don't want to misquote Chuck Artenice if she's here now. Gunshots. There may be some connotation with gunshots. This is going to sound probably a little tight to some people, but I'm just going to speak in my area. Organs are commodities. Organs are commodities. And we are very, very careful and very, very selective of organs that we procure and transplant. And so, each situation could be different. Someone could die and they could be an organ donor, and the case with my son. When my son died, he was an organ donor, but because of the situation, they could only, only procure from my son two kidneys and a pancreas. That was all. No lungs, no livers. His eyes was a blessing to someone, but other than that, that was all they could procure. So, there is no set number that if you're an organ donor, they'll be able to use everything. If that could answer your question.
And finally, our families approached based upon the opportunity to harvest organs, whether the member who passed was an organ donor or not. Is there just a... Is there any effort to approach families just to see if they will donate organs?
Families are not approached in that way. What happens is, if your family member was an organ donor, and I'm hoping someone in the family already knows that, then yes, the Carolina Donor Services, there's someone there at the hospital. Because as you know, as soon as the person dies, organs have got to be surgically removed. And so, there is a staff person there at the hospital.
To approach the family?
And that's because, no, the family should already know that their loved one is a donor. So, once the person dies, then yes, they would approach the loved one of that person if they're a donor.
So, that person who's at the hospital would never go and approach a family just to see if they were an organ donor or they were...
No.
Or they were willing to donate?
They wouldn't just walk up to a family member. It would be some discussion. It would be done differently from that. No.
Well, I mean, any discussion. I don't mean just walking up in the lobby. I mean, is there any discussion?
Oh, yes. There's a problem of discussion if they're a donor.
Whether the person is an organ donor or not.
Thank you, Denise.
Hello. I'm Denise Love, and I am over multicultural outreach for Donate Life. So, I just want to clarify a few things. If I can jump back to your question about the data around African-American recipients versus transplant trends. I did want to give just the most recent data since you did ask the question. Right now, North Carolina African-Americans make up about 22% of the population. And in 2018, they accounted for a little, really about half of the transplants received. So, while there's no direct correlation, there is no discrepancy among race, age, gender, disease, whatever it may be, in regards to your ability to receive or to donate. That's totally up to the doctor. So, in regards to your question around the approach, we have transplant, organ procurement organizations within North Carolina. So, two of them. And the one in this area is Carolina Donor Services. So, when you talk about a care team, the family that, the team that, for example, took care of Dr. Coley's son, made every effort to save his life, that's 100% different from the transplant team. So, there are protocols and processes that have to be followed. It wouldn't be that the ER doctor trying to save someone's life goes and asks what organs can be donated. It does not work like that. So, there's an actual protocol that has to be followed, and there are several degrees of separations in regards to who has access to the registry and where that conversation starts. Does that help explain a little bit? Or could you rephrase your question?
That's okay.
No, no, no. We're, I'm more than happy to make sure that any myths and misconceptions are dispelled because I think that's the purpose of our mission of Dr. Coley's.
Well, I ask you this question is, I would just like for the public to know...
Yes.
That, number one, if there is the eventuality that someone should meet an unfortunate demise, that someone would or would not approach them? And that question's that, yes or no?
Yes. So, for example, our organ procurement organization would approach following the proper protocol.
Whether there was a hard-on the license, unlicensed driver's license out. So, the person wouldn't have to have already been an organ donor...
No, no, not at all.
Sign up to be, for that organ to be used because someone was going to approach the family?
Exactly. Depending upon the circumstance, if they're viable for donation. So, for example, if, you know, I were to leave here and be in an unfortunate car accident and be presented as completely brain-dead, which is the irreversible flow of blood to the brain, and depending upon a number of tests, if I'm viable, if I'm a viable candidate for donation, only then would an outside transplant team be contacted.
And the medical staff will let that organization you're talking about know that?
Exactly.
And that would trigger them going on to make an enrollment with the family?
Exactly. The organ procurement organization would then come in to educate the family, talk with the family, and talk through their options.
And remember, she said, if she's a viable candidate.
Right.
So, let's not leave that step out.
Yeah. Most people assume if you have the holding your license, you're automatically, you know, going to be an organ donor. But that's one of the most prominent myths in our community, especially African-American community. So, I just encourage everybody to visit our website because there's a lot of information. The process is very in-depth and detailed. So, I always encourage people to either visit our website, talk with individuals like Dr. Coley or our organ procurement organization. We can literally walk you through the steps, give you a tour, whatever it may be. We are very transparent organizations. So, any questions or concerns you guys have, we'd be more than happy to walk you through it.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We could talk about this subject all day long because it's a great subject. But trust me, the teams that do this, they got their act together. They know what they're doing because they got to act fast. They don't have all day. And just keep in mind, regardless of what race you are, if you cut us, we all bleed red. And that's the way them teams look at it. They don't... That's just... They're fantastic. And that's, I've said enough. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Aicott for approval of the motion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Next on our agenda is a motion to approve Resolution 2019-8, resolution recognizing the 11th Annual Career Fair and 5th Annual STEM Fair by the Wayne Education Network. And I believe Kate Daniels is here.
Good morning.
Now, my... Oh, thank you. I had pulled it up on my phone and I thought, I'm going to have to be squinting doing this. I am pleased to stand before you on behalf of the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce and the Wayne Education Network and thrilled to have with us Tommy King, who is the Chair of the Career Fair and the STEM Fair that's going to be coming up this week at the Maxwell Center. We are going to be pulling in 1,600 8th graders from across the county. So, public, private, homeschool students are invited to come out. We work on the logistics of the transportation to bus them all there. It's an all-day event from 8:00 to 2:00, and it's about career exploration. So, we appreciate all of your support of these efforts. We know that workforce development starts early. I think it's something we used to talk about happened when people entered the workforce, and we know better now that it starts much earlier. So, our goal is to spark an interest and opportunities for these young minds. Research continues to show us that that 7th to 8th grade period is a pivotal time for a student. We've got 110 businesses that have said yes to giving us a half a day of their time for this career exploration. And then the following day, we're going to welcome 1,600 7th graders to the Maxwell Center again for a STEM fair. We've got a record number of student exhibitors there, and we do invite you all to come. I know Chairman Gurley was a judge last year for the STEM fair. It is a tough, tough job. We continued to walk around last year going, I'm so glad I'm not in school anymore. These kids are so smart. And when you, when you think about the future of our workforce and the future leaders that are going to be leading our county and running businesses, I think we're in very, very good hands. So, with that, do I read this?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to summarize it? All right. Tommy, if you want to tag team this, let me know. All right. Whereas, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce's Wayne Education Network is a program of the Wayne Charitable Partnership, Inc. Whereas, the Wayne Education Network was a countywide initiative created in 2009 to improve the quality and economic prosperity in Goldsboro and Wayne County through programs and partnerships to enhance the education and training opportunities for students of all ages. Whereas, middle grades have proven to be a critical time for students' academic, social, and emotional development. And whereas, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce is working to support educators throughout the county by helping to further expose and prepare young adults for post-secondary opportunities. And whereas, we are challenging all businesses, small and large, to participate in the countywide workforce development effort to engage and inspire the students. And whereas, the 11th Annual Career Fair will be held at the Maxwell Center on March 20th, 2019, will welcome 1,600 students for career exploration, and is open to all Wayne County 8th grade students, public, private, charter, and homeschool students. And whereas, the 5th Annual STEM Fair will take place March 21st at the Maxwell Center and will welcome 1,600 7th grade students to explore exhibits with the goal of helping students to understand their own potential in areas of STEM and to help build confidence and competence among their peers. And whereas, our students in the classroom today will be the workforce of tomorrow. And whereas, in addition to the career and STEM fairs, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce and the Wayne Education Network lead the Junior Leadership Program, annual teacher welcome breakfast, Golden Rule Program, teacher mini-grants, and raise the funds needed through the annual Dancing Stars of Wayne County sponsorships. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Wayne Education Network for its efforts in enhancing the lives of students and teachers in Wayne County and encourages all businesses and community leaders to support the career and STEM fairs of Wayne County. Adopted the 19th day of March, 2019, Joe Gurley III, Chairman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. And thank you, Carol Bowden, for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Chairman? Yes. First, if you've never been out there to see one of these, you need to go see those kids. It's a lot of fun. I did miss last year. I don't know what happened. I know I missed, but I'm sorry.
We'll see you this year.
I'll do better this year. But, you know, you really got to thank not only the Chamber for stepping up and doing this with the educational network, but the interest in our local workforce, our businesses who know that they've got to draw these kids in if they're going to have a workforce in the future. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this resolution as presented. Thank you, Mr. Page. Motion's been made. Any more discussion or comments? Mr. Mayo?
Yeah, I got to say something. The STEM program is the best thing that's happened in our schools in the last 20 years. We are seeing, in our small company, we're seeing the results that young people are starting to see a lot of trades that they can go into and in some cases can make as much money as some doctors and lawyers. Okay? I'm not saying that to brag. What I'm saying is, is that the trades are... Have you called a plumber lately or electrician? Okay? So, we're seeing in our small company in the machining sector, we're seeing young people because of STEM and other activities that they are exposed to are coming into manufacturing basically out of high school, you know, and going into maybe an apprenticeship program such we have in the county. I want to thank the Chamber and the support, but the key is, is that the STEM program has been a shot in the arm for economic development, not only in Wayne County but across our state. So, thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
One comment. 10 years.
Yes.
10-year anniversary.
Yes, sir. So, this, we're going into our 11th one tomorrow. It has been one of those things to watch grow over the years. Janet Brock, who is with the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, has been with us from the beginning. And an incredible cast of characters, of volunteers who represent from the education system to businesses. And every year, it gets better, and it's something we need to all be proud of. And it's up to us. It truly is up to us as a community to be able to expose these children to opportunities, these young minds, whether it's a four-year, post-secondary education, or if it's entering the workforce right out of high school or getting a certificate. There's a lot of opportunities. And so, we are just very, very grateful for the support of the county and the many businesses and leaders who are taking time. It takes time, but it takes effort that it really lies within us to do our part as citizens.
Absolutely. We appreciate the support. Appreciate you, Mr. Gurley, coming out last year and being a judge for us.
It was quite a challenge, a real challenge.
I don't think he knew what he was getting at until he got there.
That's what he told me. It was a challenge.
But no, you definitely see the smiles on the kids' faces, hear what they're... Hear how they're interacting with the businesses that are there. And you can just see it and know next year that you're going to be excited all over again to make it happen.
That's right. That's right. It creates ripple effects. It's amazing. It's interview opportunities for these students to present. It's a big deal. When they've got other businesses coming up to them, they're learning a lot of skills. There's a lot of nerves in the room. There's a lot of excitement. So, we are, we're pumped up for this week, y'all.
And you start to see a little bit of competition in them too.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's good.
That's good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Page made the motion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Daniels and Mr. King.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And good luck tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we could ask for you guys to come down. We're going to take a couple of pictures real quick so Kate and Tommy hold tight, but we're going to start with Dr. Coley and her group. They wanted a photo.
Resolve. Resolve.
Thank you, Allison.
If y'all will let the Commissioners line up and get some questions, we'll come inside.
Okay.
We don't wanna hide you. We don't wanna hide you. Which camera first? Jen, Greg, Bear?
Thank you. Thank you. And it gives the call. All right, I wasn't paying attention. Can we get on the side? Okay. Eight to two. So, any town, any, oh, no, no, eight to two. Thank you all very much. Eight to two, anytime, swing by.
I, I had some public comments that I wanted to.
You wanna make some comments?
No, no.
We're a little past 9:05, but we're still opening up for public comments. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up and try to limit yourself to four minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Rest of y'all, Commissioners, I'm glad to be here this morning. And I thank God for y'all letting me come here and say hello and present some things that I'd like to say publicly. This is a good morning for me. I've worked. My name is Renner Petty. 312 Renner, R-E-N-N-E-R. Last name is Petty, P-E-T-T-Y, Senior. 312 Brenton Wood Drive, Dudley, North Carolina, 28333. Sorry. There's some things that have been on my mind for a while now, and I want to bring this out, if you will. I know, not of, but I know a couple or three of the ones that's up there. I know Mr. Grumanti very well as far as being associated with him, trying to do some things. And it had been brought to my attention and that y'all are working hard. Thank you for that. My wife and I sat down and talked about it and said, "I noticed a few minutes ago that they were speaking about honor, that donation, et cetera, organ donation." I'm a kidney transplant recipient myself, and I do thank them. I would like to say thank directly to them for the work that they're doing. But right now, I would like to say thank y'all for all the work that y'all are doing for this county. And I've spoken with Mr. Steve. I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Chip. Spoke with Mr. Danny Price. I've spoken with lots of people here in Wayne County trying to get some things done. And I will say now, today, I am relieved because it is being done. And that is cleaning out the ditches. We realize that there are some funds, hopefully, that would come our way again that would help us even the more. And it's have satisfied my wife and I to know that we have people like y'all working in our half, in our behalf. And I'm living in Rollingwood. I can't speak directly for Rollingwood because I, as it is, some people might say, "Well, why is he's up there speaking for us? Why is he's up there doing this?" But that's the reason I'm putting it personally. I'm speaking for myself and my wife. And we thank you. We realize that y'all have helped much. The water and soil conservation, Mrs. Ashley Smith, Mr. Thomas Murphy, I think his name is, directly. He have helped tremendously. Mr. Chip Acrampl, smart man. Y'all got a good one. And I say thank you. And Mr. Stroud, Mr. Gray, everybody's been helping us. And as it is, and I realize that there was some hole up in Raleigh a little bit, but we're gonna overcome that. They, they, they gonna let everything go, I hope. And with that in mind, I'm saying right now, again, I thank Mr. Grumanti, sir, personally, because he have did so much for us, and thank y'all for everything that y'all are doing and going to do. And we say thank you this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Petty.
And if there's any questions or anything that y'all would like to ask, I'll be glad to, if you need me to say anything.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, this is so rare, we need to give you an extra four minutes. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, we don't normally react to this, but at this time. But the most important thing, one of the most important things you said was about Ashley and Thomas. That they have worked hard, and, and my little part was that I've sort of been a conversation piece between Mr. Petty and sometimes Ashley and Thomas. And it's good for him to come, not just to thank us, but to bring attention to the fact that there's work being done to try to relieve the flooding problem that's in Dudley, but all throughout. And, and, and the reason that I wanna emphasize that is there are other people up in downtown 117 who are having real critical flooding issues, but not just 117. I know there's a young man out in Rosenwood that has a farm. He brought to my attention that about 20 of his acres are underwater because of some certain condition. So, it's not just 117's out, but thank you, Mr. Petty, for, he's been persistent to try to work hard, to keep attention on this. And also a gentleman by the name of Mr. Dawe, said generally the same name, but I just wanted to pull that out and just not to take up too much time, but I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Are there any others from Bush speak?
I just, I just, on what he just said, I just wanna say thank you. We try.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please excuse my voice. I had a touch of laryngitis this morning. My name is Edward Miller. This is my wife, Stacy.
Good morning.
We're representing the parents of Edgewood Community Developmental School. And we just wanted to bring to your attention, I know some of you already know, I wanted everyone to know what.
Our concerns.
Yes.
Recently, the superintendent for the school board came to Edgewood and made reference to the school was going to be split. And our developmental day school was no longer gonna be operational. There's a lot of going back and forth about a budget had been created to replace the current Edgewood School with a new facility. And there's just a lot of uncertainty at this point. I believe Commissioner Daughtry was actually in the newspaper, and you made some statements. And a lot of those, that article, a lot of parents are hoping to get the answers to some of the questions posed in, in that article. And I, we're here to ask, I mean, have y'all received any further information? Is there anything you guys can do to, to help us continue to see what the school board is going to do? And how we facilitate confirming or ensuring that a developmental day school continues to exist for our children?
Yes, we're also going to go to the school board meetings.
I know that's next week, and some of this may be for, more for them than you, but it's very important to us and all the parents.
We stayed in Wayne County. We got here in 2004. I retired from the Air Force, but we stayed here mainly because of Edgewood. It's been a blessing to us and, and the other parents that, the kids that go there. It's really a great school. It's a great part of Wayne County. And, you know, we, we would like to see it continue, and we thank you for your time letting us speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during public comments time? If not, we'll close this, and we'll begin with, I'm about to finish this, Mr. Honeycutt. I'm sorry. You jumped ahead of yourself again. My fault.
You just don't like me, Charlie.
We gotta do appointments next. I'm sorry. We're both ahead of ourselves. That's fine. Mr. Acock, Appointment Committee, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Appointment Committee would like to recommend Mr. Herbert Yates to serve on the Wayne County Planning Board. And we'd like to put this on the agenda for April, our April the 2nd meeting to vote on. But this is a recommendation from the Appointment Committee. And also, step on my own toes here, we need four more people or someone to appoint to the Housing Appeals Board. And it's four of those Commissioners that are guilty for not turning someone in yet, and that's myself and Mr. Bell, Mr. Grumanti, Mr. Mayo. And I think our clerk is kind of anxious to get that board filled. She's been working on it for over a year now, and I think she's beginning to lose her cool. So, so it's four of us got to step up and find somebody. And that's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
That's true. I think, yes, Mr. Page.
I'll just add something to this, since I see Craig sitting in the back of the room, not District Craig Pope. The workforce board out in Uweans got three slots that are becoming available June 1, or is it July 1?
June.
June 1. We, we're already talking. So, I left you a voicemail the other day, by the way. So, if you can help us fill those slots, by all means, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes care of our phone call.
Okay, Mr. Honeycutt, third time's charged. Let's do it.
I'm just so excited about getting the project started. We're just jumping ahead of people, so I do apologize about that. As the boards aware, we have met representatives of Skinner-Farlow and current architectural firm to discuss the Bussman Building. And as the boards aware about the Bussman Building, we looked at that originally for the Advanced Manufacturing Center with Wayne Community College. That didn't work out, and now we have this asset of about 70,000 square feet that we have a new roof and a new HVAC that we have really just sitting there. And, and we're trying to look at a repurposing of that building. But we've met with staff to discuss concerns, but we've also met with the city of Goldsboro officials because the building is located within the floodplain. Some of the highlights of the meeting. Currently, the building is eight inches below the flood, or the, excuse me, the footboard of what the city requires with respect to buildings being in a floodplain. Originally, when Skinner-Farlow originally looked at it, they thought it was two feet below, but it really is only eight inches below. So, whatever we have to do in that building, if we're, we're gonna look at a couple of different options, we will have to build up the floors and flood the roof, the walls at a minimum of eight inches. But again, that was, when we originally looked at it to come up two feet, it was about a million dollars. And eight inches, it'll be much more less than the full million dollars. Again, if we don't wanna look at raising the footboard, we can just renovate the building. We, but we can only renovate it 50% of the valuation at a time. So, that would mean that really is probably over a two or three-year cycle that we would have to do the renovations. Because right now, I think the tax value on it is about a million two. But if you look at the improvements we've made, you're probably looking about a tax valuation or valuation of the building of probably over $2 million. But we don't have a current appraisal done of the site. But again, we can only do 50% of the renovations of the value of the building per year. And we did ask them if they would give us a waiver, and they basically said, "No, we would not get a waiver because if they did give us a waiver, it would affect everybody else's insurance within the floodplain." So, they did not wanna give us that waiver. We also did look at building new, and we can build new in the floodplain. As long as we're two feet above the floodplain stage, two feet above the footboard. The only issue is if we build in a parking lot, we're gonna have to do some type of stormwater drainage and retention on site because we would be, especially if it's over grassy areas, we're taking away some of the impervious coverage. So, but you can build in, in the floodplain if you, you do the stormwater, if you're taking the grass, and also if you build the two feet above. The questions we need to, to kind of resolve before we can move forward with Skinner-Farlow is do we wanna pay for the additional cost to raise the building eight inches? Or the floor eight inches and the flood roof, the walls to get to the two-foot footboard requirement? If we don't wanna do that, we then have to do it phased in. So, those are two issues we have to resolve. And then the third issue we have to make sure is we're comfortable with it is in the floodplain. Again, in Matthew, the building did not have any water damage inside. If we did, it had flooding in the parking lot, but it did not have any flooding in the parking lot during Florence. And, you know, we wanted to see if we wanted to put, you know, we talked about putting the Health Department there at one time, but also there's been discussion right now, since there's some reimbursement that could come back over time with Social Services, do we just wanna keep this as a, a Social Services site? And we have visited a couple of sites. We have visited Wilson, Commissioner Mayo went, and Commissioner Acock as well, and staff. They renovated a building there. Their biggest issue that they said was it was still a little small now because the state is putting a lot of additional requirements within CFAST and also the MOUs that their expansion now, they're having issues by not having enough space. And we also went and looked at Onslow County as well. And basically, Onslow County built new, but they said their issue well was even after two years was space issues. But we do, we have vetted Skinner-Curlin. We have gone through the, we advertised for request for proposals. We interviewed three architectural firms. We recommended to the board Skinner-Curlin and Farlow. And we, I think the Facilities Committee as well recommended Skinner-Curlin and Farlow. The next step is signing the, the contract to move forward. Again, if you look at their fee, their fee is 8% of renovation. And we wanted to make sure, we will clarify that, that the renovation that they are projecting is anywhere between 3.2 and $7 million, or 7.5 million. So, we wanna make sure that any renovation would be 8% of actual cost for the renovation. So, I've given you a lot of information.
Mr. Mayor, we're into question stage now. If you'd like, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple. If we do, if we do all the renovations... If we do, if we do all the renovations at one time, my, I understand that we would have to raise the floor by eight inches. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But if we do only half of the value of the building per year, then we don't have to raise the eight inches, the floor eight inches. Now, I want to know what sense does that make? Because what is the difference? If we are not going to have to raise the floor, if we go over a three or four-year period to stay within the 50% of the value of the building, as a end result, that floor is going to be at the same place. What difference does it make just because we're going to do all the, recommend to do all the renovations at one time? Why do we have to raise the floor period? Can somebody tell me, please?
Rules that the City of Goldsboro have approved under their flood insurance, I'm not saying it-
FEMA.
FEMA require, or it is, their floodplain regulations-
State rules.
The state rules.
State rules.
Yeah, that's why the state rules are written.
Yeah, but you don't accomplish anything by raising the floor eight inches to finish the project all in one year, for example. You don't gain anything if the floor stays where it's at now. I don't understand the mentality here. If we don't have to raise the floor eight inches by going over three or four years, why can't we do the project all in one year, not paying attention to the half a million? I mean, that, that 50% of the value of the building? Why do we have to raise it under those circumstances when, if we went over three or four years, that floor would be the same height that it is now? Would you please tell me why we need to raise it? Somebody. It don't make sense.
May I have my husband?
Uh-
Mr. Carver, would you please help me?
Mr. Chairman, may I have my husband?
Please, go ahead.
When the storm comes next year and the flood comes and it rains harder than it's ever rained before, and the water's all down there, and it, and it exceeds the eight inches, I thought that's why we raised it because at some point, we probably going to get that 500-year storm next year, the year after that, and go, and the, and the regulation says that we need to have it raised. Not that we're trying to, I thought it was caused of water, the storm may come and we may need to have it raised, or this-
The, the renovation issues with respect, and, and, and I, I fully understand your, your logic of what you're trying to, what, what you're saying is, either you can do it over time and not raise it, or why do you have to raise it a year one, is what you're saying? And, and you're not accomplishing anything by protecting the building anymore by doing it over time.
That's correct.
Those are just rule-
There's got to be something that we can do here.
I don't have any logic to, to respond.
Chip, Chip, do you have-
In order for the City of Goldsboro to participate in-
Chip, don't, don't chip me. In order for the City of Goldsboro to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, they have to adopt a set of standards for construction. That's rehab and new construction. Anytime you go over 50% of the building value, that's considered new construction and would require it to be elevated to two foot above the base flood elevation, of which we have an eight-inch difference. There's no rationale to say if you stay below, if you're staying below that 50% threshold, then you can get by without elevating it. It's just a way around that rule. But in order for the City of Goldsboro, they have, they have to adopt that standard in order for its residents to be participants in the flood insurance program.
Right. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could, could I just say, I don't have, I don't have a problem with, I do have a problem with that ordinance, but I understand. But I, I, I would, I would say, and I'm in favor of, if we can, to try to do the renovations because I understand now that since we're talking about eight inches, we may be talking about 300, 400,000 raising the floor. But I would like to see us, if we can, to, to get DSS into that building as soon as we can. And I would like to just recommend to the commissioners to look at going ahead and doing all the renovations the first year if we can. And the reason I'm saying that is keeping in the back of our mind that DSS, we will get a reimbursement, and it can be, in some cases, and I'm not setting a figure, it can be up to 64% of the cost of this over a certain number of years, maybe 15 or 20 years. So I, I'm just recommending that and not to hold this out for two or three years. Go ahead and do the, the eight inch, and, and let's, let's go ahead and get this underway. The thing, the other thing I want to say is, is that someone, part of this, what we're voting on today, part of this criteria, scope of work is preliminary cost estimate. The newspaper came out with a cost estimate yesterday, and, and the newspaper, 4.5 to 7.5. Who gave that figure?
That was in the scope of work from Skinner-Farlow. That was in the scope of work. They, again, this is just what their initial perception is. But what we would do would be based upon their actual expenditures or what actual big cost was at 8%.
Well, it, it bothered me from, from, for this reason. We, we had estimated, of course, this was an internal estimate, that the, the remodel itself, not raising the floor, but the remodel itself is going to be around 1.5 to possibly two. Okay? So I think that 1.5 and 4.5 is still out of the realm depending on what all we need to do.
Right.
But at the time that I was looking and possibly looking at building on to this building, full possible health department or some other department, that was not the case. We were estimating that the actual renovations in the original building was going to be somewhere around 1.5 to two. So I'm, I'm asking, how did it get to 4.5 to 7.5? I mean, we're, we're sending the wrong signal here.
I'm not disagreeing. I, I think what they have done is we have given them a scope of, you know, a preliminary look at our hierarchy with respect to our org chart within social services and about preliminary what we need. That, again, is their preliminary number, and, and it is very preliminary, but their cost, what they would charge us would be 8% off of actual, what was actually bid at. You know, that, that's just a range to start with. But, but again, it will only be actual. And, and again, we would have the final say-so about what that final number or what that final design would be.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Could I have one other statement, please, real quick? And also, I want to say that as Chairman of the DSS Board, I've had extensive conversations with our Director, Tammy Schrenker. I'm also, I'm also on board with, and this and other DSSs and other counties, we are not going to do anything in DSS from what we see over the next 10 years but grow. Therefore, I, I originally wanted to see the building sort of split and saved. That's probably not going to be, I've been educated, I'll put it that way. This 7, 8,000 square foot building is probably, it's going to be needed. It's going to be needed according to our projections over the next five to 10 years. So I want to also say as an end, I do not have a problem with this building being totally for Department of Social Services.
And, and one thing to, to hopefully relieve some of your concerns, we're not looking at maximizing the footprint of that building, just to maximize the footprint of the building. If it is not, you know, utilized at this point, we will not look at renovation of that.
Exactly. That's, okay. I'm good. Thank you.
First of all, if there's anyone out there to pay us $1.2 million for that building, call me. Secondly, I agree with Mr. Mayo. 4.5 million to 7.5 million, that's $3 million swing. I mean, either I'm missing something or this firm is trying to cover their rear end. I, I don't, I just, I don't understand that much of a swing. I mean, I-
Well, and, and I think part of that is, is an estimation on their part. We've just, we've not gotten into exactly looking at HVAC, electrical, any of those design criteria at this point, any construction documents or anything. So they were, they were given a range and, and they just wanted us to be aware.
Mr. Chairman.
I mean, with, with that much of a spread, heck, I could be an architect. But, but, but also keep in mind too now, we're talking about eight inches raising the floor. What a lot of people may not understand, the roof height on that building, this eight inches won't affect, won't affect because it was a manufacturing building, the roof is high enough that, you know, the, the eight inches is not going to interfere with, with the function of the building. And I've already said too much.
What, Mr. Mayor?
One, one other, one other thing. That's why, that's why I had a problem with the 4.5 to 7.5. It was conjecture because the scope of work is here in what we're getting ready to vote on to preliminary cost estimate. This is sending the wrong signal to any prospective bidders that are looking for this, and, and it shouldn't have been done. And I, I rest my piece right there. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Daughtry.
I suppose in looking through this, I'm going to take a different track. And that is the schedule that they have needs to definitely be compressed. They are projecting 43 weeks, 10 months to design this work, and that is a bit much. We were hoping to have it completed in 10 months, let alone designed in 10 months. So we do need to tighten that up. And I agree, some of that is an overestimate because of review, but if a review needs to be done, you need to call a meeting of those people that need to give approval for the next week to have it resolved.
Right.
So let's, let's tighten that up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I do. I make a motion to approve the fee proposal from Skinner-Farlow-Curlin Architecture for Providing Design Services for the relocation of the Wayne County Department of Social Services to the Busman Building, Dixie Trail property. I make that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion made. Commissioner Mayor, any other discussion, comments, questions?
Just one comment.
One comment.
And I don't know, we really expect this to be preliminary, but we want to see some tightened-up numbers in time. I think that's really important. They make good points.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
One, one. Mr. Manager, as with some other recent building, I, I thought that there was some architectural projections that the figure was going to be like 6, 7 million dollars, and it came in quite a bit less than that. But, but then, therefore, my follow-up is that 4.5 million dollars, that, that's a projection, but when the bids come in, they're only going to get 8% of what the final bid is.
Yes, sir.
And we don't have to accept a bid that we think is, say, three came in, we just don't have to automatically accept the lowest one. We can ask for more bids. I mean, I'm, I'm getting back to my colleague here saying it sends the wrong signal, and I do agree with him. When they say 4.5 to 7 million dollars, it does, it could give the bidders out there an impression that this is Thanksgiving and they're in for some turkeys. So let's just be clear that we don't have, I, I would hope we don't have to accept one, two, per second or third bid if they are enormous. So the selling of signal to the bidders out there-
Yes, sir.
And someone other than me send that signal to them that it's, they're not necessarily going to be coughing up that if it's outrageous.
Right.
So they need to have a sharp pen, that's what I'm saying.
I hope we'll vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is our consent agenda, and we all had a view of it at 8:00 AM briefing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made, in discussion. All in favor, see if I raise my right hand. Thank you. New business, Mr. Honeycutt?
Just a couple of updates I did want to mention to you with respect to our shell build. We have had a-
You have to do the new business.
Oh, my God, I am, I am so, I'm, I'm pleased, my apologies.
We understand.
We do have a motion to approve a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation. And I do want to say a, a special thanks to our Commissioner, John Bell. Commissioner Bell could not be here at this time. He had a, an appointment that he could not get out of. But Commissioner Bell is a Vietnam veteran, and he was very appreciative of the board doing this, so I would like to read this if I could. Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas 2019 represents the 46th anniversary of the end of the American involvement in the Vietnam conflict. And whereas 2019 marks the 54th anniversary of the start of the ground campaign in Vietnam when Linda, when President Lyndon Johnson authorized the landing of the Ninth Marine Expeditionary Brigade to defend Da Nang Air Base in South Vietnam. And whereas thousands of brave Americans served our country in this conflict with courage, honor, and valor. And whereas more than 58,000 individuals made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 more were wounded in combat. And whereas 1,626 Americans are still missing and unaccounted for from the Vietnam conflict, and the families, friends, and fellow veterans still endure uncertainty concerning their fate. And whereas in 1982, the Vietnam War Memorial was dedicated to commemorate those members of the United States Armed Forces who died or were missing in action in Vietnam. And whereas the Vietnam War was an issue among the people of the United States so that the crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in the Vietnam War deprived many members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War of the support and appreciation for their service to our country. And whereas the United States Senate officially designated March 30th as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day and encouraged the people of the United States to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of the contribution of veterans who served in the United States Armed Forces in Vietnam and the importance of helping such veterans readjust to civil life. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims March 29th, 2019, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Wayne County and urges all citizens to join in this special observance and take the opportunity to honor and thank our Vietnam veterans for all that they have gave, or given in their service to our country. Read and approve this date, March 19th, 2019.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Make a motion that we accept the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation as presented.
Motion's been made, in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Could I make a plea, please?
During this time, during this time, I, I was in the, in college and was in the Armor Reserve in 1967. My unit came within two months of being deployed to Vietnam before the war ended. What I want to say is, is that a lot of my classmates, a lot of people I was in boot camp with, went to Vietnam. And three or four of our classmates out of my class served in Vietnam. We would not be able to do enough to, to make up for how these soldiers were treated when they came back from Vietnam. Some of my close classmates came into Raleigh Durham. They were spit on. They had, they had urine thrown on them. They were cussed at. And this is a great, this is a great thing that we're doing, but the hurt is still there. If you don't believe it, go talk to a Vietnam veteran. Go talk to the ones that came back from Vietnam at 19 and 20 years old, but because of Agent Orange, they were impotent. They could have no kids, no- Orange, they were impotent. They could have no kids, no family, no nothing. And to be treated the way these Vietnam vets were treated when they came home is despicable and it's unacceptable. And I am speaking for that era, even though I didn't have to go. I was there and saw it happen. So I just want to say that this is a great thing. We've done more in Wayne County for our Vietnam veterans than any of the other counties around us because I've been to what they do. We have made a concerted effort in Wayne County to, to bring up our Vietnam veterans to the same level as any other war when veterans came back. And I'm glad to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion, comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd just like to remind everyone that Wayne County had several people that gave the ultimate sacrifice during this conflict. Uh, and a lot of what Mr. Mayo said is, is true. Uh, but, uh, it's, uh, they were not thanked. But like I say, there was several in Wayne County that gave the ultimate sacrifice. And, uh, we need to keep their, their families in our thoughts and prayers still today. Thank you.
All right. All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Now, Mr. Honeycutt, your comment is?
Uh, again, I apologize, uh, about that. Um, did want to mention, uh, we have been talking with WCDAs and they have been talking with the Army Corps of Engineers about the wetlands issue at the shell building. We should have some type of delineation today is what we're hoping for. So we're, we should be able to give, uh, Jackson Builders a start this week. And, and it's been a delay after delay. Uh, part of it was a government shutdown. It, it, but just delay after delay, um, not on our part, not on Jackson Builders' part, but just trying to get this wetlands delineate delineation taken care of. And, uh, Chip, a couple of weeks ago during our meeting, uh, walked out there with them, uh, and making sure that they could see that, that was not in the wetlands. So hopefully we're going to get that emailed this week and we'll be able to get started on that. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention, uh, I do want to thank Kendall Lee. Uh, if you have not been to the old Farm Services Building, we finally have permits. Uh, we are not tearing it down. I think I put in a, an email that we were demolishing. It was internal demolition that we were doing, uh, as far as changing that over to the, uh, probation and parole. Uh, we're going gangbusters on that. So that is, uh, renovations that we're doing in-house. We may have to contract some of the electrical work out, but most everything we're going to be able to do in-house. So, um, you should be very proud of the work that Kendall and his staff is doing. Um, once we finally got the permits, we are going gangbusters on that. So, um, but again, I commend, uh, Commissioner Bell on that as well. Uh, that was, uh, Commissioner Bell who, who made that suggestion and thought that would be a good fit. Uh, the other thing I did want to mention, um, I hope everybody had, I, I don't know if Commissioner Daugherty want to mention the automotive and collision repair building at WCC. Uh, as you've seen, they have hired a design build firm in Daniels and Daniels. Uh, they are looking at starting construction on that, uh, early fall of this year. And they are looking at the completion of that by fall of next year. So hopefully, uh, that, you know, as part of the advanced manufacturing center, we're moving forward finally. So, um, it's nice to see some of the projects, uh, beginning to move forward. And, uh, we're getting close on now our next station, uh, for EMS, which is Nahana. And once we get a final date on that, we'll get that out for another ribbon cutting.
You just stole my thunder on the college.
I'm sorry. So, um, anybody have any questions?
If not, we'll start with, Mr. Ray Cox.
Well, half a mine's gone. But no, uh, we are really excited about the, the expansion at the college. Uh, Craig, do you have any comments you'd like to make or? Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's going very well. This is the first I agree legislation. So the state is very eager to make sure that this is a successful project along with the college system. So we'll have a meeting this afternoon if any of you would like to join.
But, uh, it, it's, it's moving forward. And, uh, and like I say, Daniels and Daniels got the, the, the bid and we were excited over having a local company do it. And, uh, but it's, it's moving forward. And I want to think, uh, last week, uh, as many of y'all may have saw or heard on the news, uh, the fire chief at Atlantic Beach, uh, was tragically killed in a skiing accident up in Virginia. And, uh, they, uh, his body was escorted back to Moorhead. And, uh, when I say escorted, I mean, the state of Virginia stepped up to the plate, uh, North Carolina stepped up, uh, to escort his body back home. And I'm so proud of the first responders in Wayne County. Uh, and when I say first responders, I mean, fire departments, EMS, Sheriff Department, any, any, anybody that's first responders. Uh, I want to thank them for the support. Uh, there was not an overpass in Wayne County that did not have some type of first responder on it. Uh, our Fire Marshal, uh, I understand met him at the state line and was, and helped escort him. And, uh, it's kind of like I told my wife, you know, you, uh, me being a first responder for many years, uh, when something like this happens, it doesn't make any difference what kind of badge or what kind of uniform you wear. Uh, it's, it's family. And I just want to thank all the, all the first responders in Wayne County and our staff for coordinate, uh, bringing, uh, that, that, uh, escort through Wayne County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daugherty.
No answers as of today in regards to Edgewood. I do share the concerns and the frustrations of all of the parents and the supporters of Edgewood. We hope to have some answers shortly. One of the issues has been brought up was the funding. And we have reached out to Congressman Rousier, asking him to try to resolve some of those funding issues. But in the meantime, we, with you patiently wait for some answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to add one small thing to the flooding, uh, issues that Eastern North Carolina it has experienced and probably will continue to experience. I would like to reach out and I don't get a chance very often to, uh, give a shout out to the delegations in Raleigh, uh, of which Senator Perry, the new senator from this area over here, I think was a part of it. Uh, they've designated 12 counties in Eastern North Carolina to divide 12 million dollars to, uh, work on the flooding, the greater flooding issues. And anytime we get an opportunity to thank Raleigh for something, we should do it. The next thing I want to make a comment of and I will try my best to be civil. A, a few days ago, uh, in New Zealand, a person walked in to a mosque and killed at least 50 people. But a camera attached his head so that he could videotape it. And then, uh, live streaming, a term that I'm not capable of replicating, can't explain, but it obviously is designed so that the world can see what he was doing. A few months ago, another individual with a similar mindset and evidently similar indoctrination walked into a synagogue and killed a group of people. Thank you, Pennsylvania, in the north. Some four or five years ago, it seemed like it's been that long, but maybe three. Another young man of simpler, of similar indoctrination walked into a black church in South Carolina and murdered people who were sitting in there having church. And my understanding was he stayed among them a little while before he started murdering them. I reach out to our national leaders to refrain from making wild remarks that can have a potential to lead lesser minds to do crazy things. Americans of any persuasion have more in common with each other than, than the rest of the world. We like baseball, football, apple pie. Like to observe Christmas and Thanksgiving and Easter, drive nice cars. But we have begun to let folk divide us for crazy reasons. And if anybody watches television as much as I do or just half as much as I do, they know exactly what I'm alluding to. I don't want to see that come to Wayne County. That kind of division and that kind of animosity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mayo.
Let me just have a couple. Uh, I want to appreciate Commissioner Daugherty's comments on Edgewood. Uh, I've received at least a half dozen phone calls in reference to this. And, and I, I, I agree with Commissioner Daugherty. There's a lot of things that's going on to, to, to get this to a resolution. And I ask again, just like Commissioner Daugherty, for your patience. And that's what I'm telling everybody. Do not draw conclusions based on a lot of what you hear or say. We're working on it. And I can promise you that. Second thing is, I want to thank the, the Wayne County Commissioners here today that took a step in providing a good, nice facility for the Department of Social Services here in Wayne County. And for good reason. Besides, in it during a disaster, if you think about it, besides emergency services and law enforcement, DSS is the most, is the one, is the most active department during a disaster. We, our, our, we are huge in our responsibilities during a disaster. So in order to, to bring DSS to the present and also provide for the future space-wise, Tam and I have already, oh, she's got, she's got a lot of ideas about more services we can offer if we have more space. So I just want to thank the, the Commissioners for stepping up to the plate and starting this process. And so hopefully somewhere down the road, we can, uh, do the same thing for the Health Department or any other department that needs some good facilities to, to work in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. I know February you were going tonight to Jacksonville for an updating of district meeting. Um, I got to sit on the Agricultural Steering Committee yesterday conference call and a couple of things came up that I really wanted more information, but we really didn't have time to do it in that short time we were on the phone. And one is about broadband infrastructure. There's a bill in the, in the General Assembly that's supposed to, um, bring dollars, actual dollars to counties to, to provide that infrastructure. And what they spoke about yesterday was that an example, you might go to the northern end of the county and put a tower up just for broadband. And then you lease it back to the, the companies that are providing the broadband. Really like to have more information on and really see if it's got any traction or not. And the other thing is there's three versions of a school bond out there, three of them. But, um, I still haven't heard yet how they plan to pay, pay it back. Somebody's got to pay it back. It'd be the citizens of North Carolina that be doing it. So if you have that and then you can't have that and a regular, a, a local school bond or you raise taxes, we, we just need more information out here. And that was one thing I asked our new Senator to try to keep us informed on. Those were the two big things that I heard yesterday. I'd really like to pursue a little bit further. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, yes?
Uh, I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Daugherty and Commissioner Mayo's on, on Edgewood. Uh, I've been on this board a little over six years and I've probably had more phone calls and more people to stop me and to, to address this matter than, than anything else since I've been on this board. And, uh, it's upset people in Wayne County. And we were on your side. Uh, but it's, it's, it's a shame that it's come to this, but, uh, we're going to do everything we can to get a answer. Thank you.
And Mr. Peet, thank you for your kind comments this morning and I hope you get some relief very soon. And the staff that you called over this morning, I think if there's any relief, any help there, any assistance, you'll be the first to get it because, um, they do work diligently, um, with the people that we serve. And Mr. Honeycutt, on the, um, probation and parole Farm Service Building.
Yes, sir.
That in the process of renovations.
Yes, sir.
Do, are we going to vacate the person building and put those people there?
Well, uh, yes.
Okay.
That, that is the goal. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Now, back.
Yeah. And, and I apologize, you asked me about this earlier today and, and I forgot to mention it during my, uh, update, going back to the string, uh, clean out update. Uh, wanted to let you know, we are, uh, in the process of rebidding out, uh, phase three and four of the string clean out. Uh, part of the problem is a little bit's been the contractor, a little bit's been the weather. Uh, we're getting, uh, pushback from Golden Leaf that they want the project done and resolved. So, uh, we're in the process of rebidding that out. So, um, wanted you to be aware of that. But the phase one and two are almost complete, but phase three and four has not been stopped or started yet. So we're just going to rebid it out and, and hopefully we'll, with a new contractor, we'll, uh, see some things happen much quicker. So I apologize for getting that.
Very good. Now we go back to closed session for the purpose of. Do I have a motion to go closed session?
Salute.
All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.